Good evening, everybody. Let's get started. We'll do the gavel so we know it's official. It's 6:03 PM. Today is Monday, March 7th, 2022. This is a work session. And if you want to do your call, Randy?
Yeah, Trustee LaRue.
Here.
Trustee Winslow.
Present.
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Trustee Marks.
Present.
Treasurer Johnson.
Here.
Director Katari is here and Supervisor Durant.
Here.
Staff President is Manager Cangus. And the Our Events Committee is here.
Great, thank you. Any public comment? I mean, you guys are still public if you want to like make a comment or something. Not that you can't talk later, but.
Yes, I just have a commitment at 7:00 at the library, which it's so interesting that this is at 6:00. And I probably shouldn't be here, but I wanted to be here. So I just prepared a little proposal, or not proposal, more or less, just what we've done last year.
Okay.
Just so that would kind of bring us historically where we've been.
Okay.
So if I could do that before 6:45, if possible.
Sure. That sounds good. Okay. All right, so tonight, the agenda is under policy discussion, consideration, and development. And the topic is discussion moving forward in regards to the Township Events Committee. I would suggest that this is just township events, not so much. I don't want to focus on the committee so much. That's part of it. But the discussion, I think, needs to be about the events. To that end, I want to just take like two minutes. And if you look at the sheet I handed out, this is how I see the discussion unfolding and the things that we need to consider. This is not a total list, and this is maybe it's too much. It's hard to say, but this is kind of how my head got around it. So the conversation is not directed at the committee's future, but how the Township Board wishes to proceed in the area of events that we hold in the township or have held here. So the direction of the Events Committee then will be determined based on what comes out of this discussion. So I'm just going to read through these and kind of tell you what I'm thinking real quick, and then we can go wherever you want. So should the Board financially sponsor Township events? That's, I think, the number one question we need to ask ourselves. And if we do, do we need a policy to oversee them because we're part of policy governance? And then if so, do we continue financially supporting these three events? Or if we have new events, do we just do them for the children or the schools or the whole county or certain sports teams? Or how do we see that stretching? Liability is, of course, that's been one of the biggest issues that we faced with the last round of events. And that's going to be based on the old direction. And Roger has already kind of addressed that a little bit. Then the second question is, should the Township continue to have the Events Committee? And that's based on what we decide in the first sentence or in the first question. And how does that play out? How does it range out? And then do we include? Is this supposed to be just for township residents or county residents? Do we want to include county officials because this is kind of a county event? Now, this again is if we're paying for this. Do we want to include the school officials or maybe the DDA businesses or even the DDA board? We want to bring in a board member. Because if you think of how some of the events are created in other communities, a lot of the times in a downtown event, it's the DDA that takes care of this. So then we need to look at bylaws, assuming that the Events Committee does continue. How does that look? Who makes up the committee and who creates the bylaws? Because we do need some structure. And then the event creators, whoever they are, whether it's the committee or outside people, who do they report to? Does that mean the committee itself, the manager? Obviously, the Board has the final word, but some committees report directly to the Board. And then the Board directs staff. So we kind of need that. That could be part of the policy is the way I kind of looked at it. And then how do we include other entities like the partnership? We can use them for marketing and email blasts. The County Board, I mean, I was just thinking outside the box a little bit. Business owners, we've got, you know, again, the DDA. Maybe we have Pride Printing run some of the flyers for free, and we give them a blast on the bottom. Maybe we do something with the Mining Journal with a SIG page or something. I used to be in advertising for four years. They would love to promote our events, and then they get the businesses or whoever to support the page. It doesn't cost us anything. What about the mall? If they're sponsoring the event, maybe they put it on and we just kind of help them. Maybe our Events Committee helps them. Other media, Channel 10 has been reworked for 3 and 10. I don't know. I'm just, again, thinking broad. And then if other events are to be held in the township by somebody else, how does that connection work with the township? Do we write our policy to include outside people who, like the event we had last year that got postponed, and then they ended up doing it after COVID was over? And then, you know, I think what's important, because Pete's mentioned this so many times, should the Township really start focusing on some other nonprofit organization to help with a multitude of events? And whether they work with the Events Committee or something, and maybe it is the Lions Club or, you know, again, some other county entity, I have no idea. So this is the way, when I very first put this on the agenda a few meetings ago, to talk about the events, this is what encompasses what we need to discuss, I think. And again, it's not all inclusive, and it may be too much. So Todd, do you want to talk first, or would you want Randy to go through because you have to leave?
Well, he's the founding member, so I think it'd be good to have him say a few words.
Sure, okay.
Okay, we'll give you that. You all know me, so I'm not going to introduce myself since this is really a work session, not really a formal meeting. I guess I did watch the video, and I have to apologize because I was supposed to have been here for that meeting. And quite frankly, I fell asleep after dinner. My wife didn't wake me up, so I'm just.
Blame her, then.
Yeah, so anyway, I watched the video that night, so I'm aware of the questions that were asked. And I think one of the things that is lacking is memory of how this all originated. And four board members were on the Board at the time this all originated. And basically, when this started was, it was right after we had the recall election. Dennis Newman came in as the Township Supervisor. And at that time, there was a lot of discussion and a lot of concern on part of the Board that residents weren't involved with the Township at all. But it really wasn't, nobody was coming to meetings, and there wasn't any kind of an activity or an event or anything that drew the residents in. So Dennis basically came to me and said, so what can we do? And at that time, we got in touch with Vanden Boom School. And some of you will remember, we had a big event at the gym at the Vanden Boom School. We invited the entire Township to it. We had all of the staff members there. We had every department represented. We had all the board members were there. We had things for kids. It was an event, basically. And it was very successful. It achieved what had been one of the concerns about how do we communicate with residents? So they had a chance to interact with board members, with staff, with everybody else. And that was the beginning of community events. Following that and the feedback that we got from board members and the public as well, we then set about planning the ultimate redevelopment of Lions Field as a location to offer us to do activities. And that distilled down to the first, what we called Community Day. And as part of that Community Day theme came our catchphrase that we've been using ever since for a place to live, work, and play at Township. The idea was to not limit it only to township residents. The idea was to. The idea was to open it up from the standpoint of drawing people into the Township and potentially increase residential traffic, increase business traffic, and things such as that. And that was the genesis of it. And at that first time, really, the very first one wasn't that elaborate. We had some softball games and music primarily, and that's how Todd got involved. We worked with Sunny 102, basically, who had the facilities and the equipment and things to put on a music type of venue. I had contact with the potential entertainment that was going to be there. And that basically started it. So as things went along, we had, I think, two or after the Vanden Boom, I think we had two or three Community Days in August in the summertime. And we were approached by a group of enthusiasts, basically car enthusiasts, that were going all over the place out of the area to go to car shows. And they said, how about we put together some kind of a car show there in the Township? So we worked with the Mall and again with 102 and put together our car show by the day weekend. And that was a big hit. So that's basically what went off. And ultimately, the idea became, well, you know, the city does a Christmas program. These other places do Christmas programs. Why don't we do one? So the Westwood Mall became kind of a focal point. At that time, you know, Ellen, who was the Mall Manager, was also our Planning Commission Director. So she was on board. We used the Mall primarily for most of these events. So along the short of it, that's how it got there. And the way it was structured and the way it was set up was under the procurement policy, and I'm presuming it's still in place, the procurement policy. It provided that the Township Manager at the direction of the Board was given a level of authority for commitment and spending up to $10,000. And that's how we structured all of these events. We structured them so they were well laid out and financed as part of the budget, as a community enhancement, basically, and approved by the Board. And I was authorized under the procurement policy to deal with setting it up, expending the funds, and signing the agreements to make it happen. And that's basically where we've been ever since. As the events continued to expand, I mean, you know, right now, the Community Day is looked forward to by a lot of people, you know, and it's taken on a whole new view, basically. But in any event, the process has worked up until that point, and we made sure that all of the events were included in our insurance coverage for liability protection. So all of them, anything that we sponsor is covered by your liability insurance in the power plant specifically. So that was amended due to, and I'm presuming that that still is in effect. I don't think you've changed the power plant coverage at all. So all of the events are protected for liability from the standpoint of either personal injury or damage or whatever. Up until, well, up until my last year, our building and ground staff, basically, was the bulk of the work, the labor, the workforce, setting up, taking down, being there for the event. And I was always there just to make sure that things went off as planned, and we didn't have any issues. The only issue we had was one year, quite a few people decided they were going to bring their dogs. And we had another group of people who were definitely afraid of dogs. So from that point on, no dogs. So at any of our events, no dogs. So I guess with that, I mean, that's the history. That's where it came from.
That's great.
It's always been financed by the Township as a Township event. If you look at the last page of your budget, down in the appropriations, that's where it's listed. It grew to, I think the last year was $12,500, and that was broken into three separate programs, three separate amounts budgeted, three separate amount planned, all under $10,000, obviously. So it fell within my authorities of manager to finance that budget. That's how we got there.
That's great.
Any questions at this point before you launch into your list? If you have, I'd certainly be happy to address.
Okay.
Well.
Thanks. Todd, then you want to give us your.
Oh, sure. Well, thank you for the invite. I have worked with Randy many, many years. He hired me as a corporation, really. I'm just the face of it. Great Lakes Radio, Inc. really was responsible for all of these events. We didn't really put it on there because I didn't really want to take the credit. I wanted the Township to take the credit. And I've always been enamored with a Township. I used to be in the city. Then I'm in Agony, and I'm in Ishtraming Township. And as I look at Marquette Township, to me, it's where it's happening. Of course, Esben. They don't say no. And you guys, you don't really say no. You figure out a way, as he did, as Dennis did, as you helped me. We build a tower on a building, on columns, and welded that. How did we do that? Well, because it was in Marquette Township, and we figured out a way. So I really respect the Township. As I look down the lane, you got in Agony Township where my camp is. I think it's a little passe. It's certainly not crazy good. It's okay. You get down to Agony, it's a little laid back. Ishtraming even more so. They have some new things going on. Then you get to some other townships out west that can't hold a candle to us. I've always felt this is the greatest place. And I've said many times, you know, we're in the top three or we're the fastest growing township in the state of Michigan. I've said that, and then I qualify it. Well, you know, we're in the top three probably, but I add that. But the point is, this is happening. This place is happening. And I've almost felt that we're almost legendary. Okay? We're almost legendary as a township. We got a big gun over there with a DDA with a full-time person making, what, 60, 70 grand? Full-time events lady making 30, 40 grand? So they spent $100,000 just to run their DDA. They do Music on Third Street four months a year. And then Music in the Mall came from Music on Third because they only do it four months, and it's warm in the mall. And our first event, as Randy said, was a musical event. We had eight bands, maybe some young kids, some, you know, food. We had a fun time, but it was music oriented because people like that. So Music in the Mall was kind of a, well, you guys are a big gun down the road there, even though you have all this money and you do Restaurant Week and everything else. You do a nice bunch of festivals down there. We're still Marquette Township. And guess what? We're the fastest growing township in the state of Michigan. So there you go, Marquette. That's how I feel. And that's been at the basis of what I've advertised over the years. So in order to know where we go, maybe this will just say it. Where have we been? Because this is kind of a similar year. So last year, if you look at page two there, in early April, we had a musical event because, you know, you can't do Music on Third in April. So we had a real good event there, a lot of fun. Page three, we followed that up, May 7, 8, 9. I think that was close to Mother's Day. We had another nice event there, three very good bands. One of those bands went on the radio, too. So they put them on the radio for an hour, which is just really rare. City of Marquette doesn't get that. Agony doesn't get that. Ishpatoun doesn't get that. Marquette Township does through the radio station, through our partnership. So we did that again this weekend, by the way. So page four, there's our recent car show, June 19. That was my birthday. I love cars. I had so much fun that day. Bill really helps us at the radio station. I don't know about you guys, if you've ever been there, but 1:30, Bill, too, we do a raffle. All those prizes come from him. We don't pay for those. That takes a lot of effort to go out and get that done. But everybody says this is the best car show in the area. Of course, it's Marquette Township. We wouldn't expect for anything less. We're known for that. And we bring in cans, too, for the food bank, and TV6 gets behind it for us. Page five, Catch the Vision, Community Days. So much fun. What a great day. And Super One's now doing two shifts, not one. Two five-hour shifts. They're there 10 hours doing brats for us. I just think that's fantastic. Wally World wouldn't do that. Target won't. Who else is in the Township? Well, there's Super One, and they cut us checks. Sheriff is there, no dogs, of course, good bands. Now, this is a little variable. That's why it's so hard to budget, but. So we had a bigger band come. Pete's relation came or nephew, but they have about seven, eight in the band, which is fun. But you can't expect people to play for nothing, so I give them 100 bucks each. So we got a four-piece, 1, 2, 3, 400. We got three, four-pieces, 400, 800, 1,200. But if we got an eight-piece, all of a sudden, you know what I mean? So it is a little variable. You have a four-piece, a five-piece, and an eight-piece. Page six, Henry and I, that's our little toto. Took a walk and just checked on the Christmas tree. And all was well. Page seven, Tree Lighting. We had a ball this year with the Grinch and Santa, and we took it the extra mile. TV6 came down at 5:00 AM, and Bill was there as Santa. And Rusty, he says, I never see 5:00 AM. I'm up at, you know, midnight. Because he's an artist. So he came down as a Grinch, but we had a wonderful two hours on TV6. All free. You know, that was really good for the Township. Goes right along with being the pace setter, being the one that makes it happen. Agony didn't do that. No one else did that. So that's kind of the Christmas thing. We also had a lot of fun with the Studio Manzards. It was a little ominous because 40 of those girls came up on the stage, and they were jumping. Now, they're only like, what, 40, 60, 80 pounds? I don't know. They were 100. That was like two ton, but they weren't quite that heavy. But it was, whoa, something just happened here. But people love that. That's a really fun mall business. Page G, we also did a farmer's market several times, five times. That was always one of Randy's goals when he recruited me to the committee. And we tried to do it, and it was basically up to me to do it. You talk about all these new volunteers and these questions. I love it. Because I was in charge of the farmer's market. So the church came out the other day. He's a progressive pastor. He's going to have 800, 900 people come down through that mall. And he said, Todd, there used to be a farmer's market here. My wife came. Oh, yeah, we had five of them. Well, why don't we have them anymore? I said, okay, one pointing at you, three pointing at me. So that's why we don't have it anymore because I cannot possibly keep up with it. And I just took it on as chair of the committee, but. We had a dozen, 15 different people come to the mall. They all did well. They all sold a lot of things. But I just couldn't advance it myself. Okay? So I am the problem with why there's not a farmer's market. The pastor said, wow, we need to get it together. I'm happy to hear that. Page nine, you never know what we'll get. This particular time, we got almost 1,600. Sometimes we've gotten 2,300. One time, we accidentally gave away two tickets to every car that came in. One guy brought three cars. He got six tickets while it's one guy. So what am I supposed to do with these other five tickets? You get a free meal, right? Oops. Somehow, we didn't quite communicate on that one. So basically, we did get a check from that event. We gave away all our raffles. But usually, we get a check. We were just moving ahead this year. Number 10, we just did a flea market this past weekend. Marquette's biggest indoor yard sale. And I just threw the Township and the MTBA on the bottom of that regardless. I know maybe we aren't doing these things, but those posters were done. There was 200 of them printed. We had a packed mall. We had 50 booths come, even though the ice storm. It was pandemonium until about 1:00 PM. Hundreds came Saturday, okay? And the radio stations really got behind it. A lot of people had heard it on the radio, and it's just another fun thing in the Township. And I just got to thinking, what better thing could we do for people on a cold Saturday, March 5, than say, come to a nice, warm mall? And you could yard sale. Shop, just have fun. I just think it's within the field of the Events Committee, something like that. To me, that's kind of what we're about. But it's something we don't need to do. But strung together, those guys are pros, pros, pros. They've been playing 10 years at Black Rocks. We had it on the radio for an hour. It was so professional, so fun. It was just such a nice highlight. Anyway, the booth people, they already have 30 booths coming up for next month, April 9. We have no music yet. I thought about maybe doing an open mic. So this is just in the planning stages, but we'll probably see another one April 9. And here again, no one else is doing anything. Forsyth Township's not doing anything for their community members. Ishtraming, Agony, what's going on? It happens right here, Marquette Township. So I just thought that was a cool thing. Draft plan, continue engaging residents in our community with our branded message. You know, we have a branded message. Great place to live, work, and play. The fastest-growing Township state of Michigan, many times. Who else can say that? But we say that. So I've also added, hey, you've probably heard me say it before. You know, if you're thinking about starting up a new business, why don't you consider Marquette Township? When I was the city of Marquette, I had to relocate. They don't say no. They'll figure it out. I don't know. Consider Marquette Township. I throw that in those radio ads, and I do it from the stage. People look at me, but it's okay because that's how I feel. So one thought was lock your budget in. If you still want this committee to continue, Pete's on it. Randy, Bill, me. Joe also comes from the Mall because we have a couple of events there. We had three ladies on in the past, too, that were very helpful, but they just kind of ran their course. You know, decided to move to Florida or go to Arizona with the kids, you know? But if you locked your budget in, that would be fine. We never know how many members we're truly going to have, you know, with the bands and things. Our band fee was about $500 this weekend, and we covered that. But if that would work better, that's what Randy and I had it at and John had it at. But as far as the Music in the Mall, they cost about $1,000 because it's about 400 for talent and then about 600 to advertise it. Father's Day is around $3,000. Community Days, that's a typo. It should be 5,000 because there's some wild cards in there. We don't know how many band members we're going to have. We do have to rent PA, et cetera. So that one's a little light. I don't know. That should be five. The tree ends up running about Catch the Vision or the tree lighting and a Night with Santa at the Mall ends up just shy of four, sometimes a little more. It was wonderful this year with all the trees in the Mall. They had a dozen trees in there, and I think they're coming back. So I think we could play on that this year. Depends what we do out front with the tree. It just has to be manageable. The one tree we attempted to get was unmanageable. So this one we got, Dennis Andrews helped. He's an expert in tobacco. We gathered it. It was still about 32, 35 feet, but it was very manageable. Boom, boom, right up, boom. But we break a bunch of branches. So somebody has to climb up there and put those branches back on. And they have to be put on upside right, not upside down. So that falls upon us, but I'm happy to do it. And then farmer's market, you know, wish we had a DDA going, that we could do some of those things, too. But we end up value-wise running at least 18 grand or so. And I know John just pulls his hair out. Boy, you're getting thin there, too. He says, Todd, we've got to be right on the budget. And I said, okay, okay. I've never been super good with that. I work really hard to do that. And sometimes it goes a little bit one way or another, but. And then sometimes you get more from Super One. Sometimes we get donations, but not a lot of people do. They do with gifts. Are there any questions kind of where we were last year on these events?
So I have a question.
Yes.
So you said that you, so who had to pay $500?
Great Lakes Radio did.
Great Lakes Radio paid $500 cash?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I know that I saw a flyer about the event in the Mall, and their booths were charged, people were charged for the booths. So who collected that money?
Yes, so there was about $900 in booth money.
Well, if there were 50 booths, it was $25 a booth.
Yeah.
So someone didn't pay?
Well, did you notice there was an ice storm Saturday morning?
Well, right, but you said there were 50 booths. So the vendors or?
Yeah, but certain ones didn't show. A few didn't show.
Oh, okay, so.
So then that was about 900.
So there weren't 50.
But in order to do an event like this, we get a media partner that hammers it. And I got three for one. So what that means is if I invest $900 or $1,000 with him, which I told him we'd invest $1,000 because I thought 50 booths we could do. He gave us $3,000 in ads, and that's why we had hundreds of people come. So many knew about it. This age right here, we pretty much still listen to the radio, very much. And we liked the yard sale. But there were younger families, you know, too. So that money, that 900, went right to the radio station. And then I covered the other because I kind of thought we would eventually maybe do the $600. I was just thinking ahead, and it's fine. It's fine.
Okay, so bands on Third Street, those people aren't paid to play on Third Street? Okay, so, so bands on Third Street, those people aren't paid to play on Third Street?
Sometimes, no, the DDA doesn't, no.
No, no.
I know, I know.
Oh, okay.
But, but sometimes that restaurant will get a certain ban. And believe me, the tip jar is annoying.
Yeah, so it's tips.
Yeah, but the restaurant who gets that ban, they want to annoy the tip jar. Okay, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, I just have a little different vision of some of this, that, you know? And I also know that young people get their news information through different sources than older people do. So, yeah. And, and I guess, I think we have to, and maybe the board will talk about this, but you know, I, I think the DDA is great and that's probably who this is all targeted for, because it's about businesses drawing in new customers. And so, I don't, no, we do have a DDA, don't we? Yeah.
I'm ahead of it.
And we have a business association too.
Yeah. I used to be the vice president of that.
So, I mean, I think, I think, you know, it's never bad to look at things and re-
Evaluate?
Reevaluate, yes. And what is the value of all of this and who, you know, who is it for and?
That's a really good question. Could you go online quick?
I can.
Could you type in sunny.fm, a minute?
I can do that.
Yes, not a dot com, it's a dot fm. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, now on that little search right there above your, up to the right, right there, click that and type in Marquette Township. Okay. And click search.
Okay.
Okay. So I went and looked the other day, because here's what happened at the mall. Towner's Restaurant named Lynn is now in Marquette Township. So John said, Todd, I'll buy you a cup of coffee. I said, whoa, I'll have one. So we went and had a cup of coffee. And we got to talking to, what's his name, John, do you know? Do you know his name? Mr. Towner.
No.
And I don't think it-
Let's try it.
We got to talking to him and he said, you know, he likes Marquette Township, he's got a positive feeling about it. But he said, what do you guys do? And I says, well, we have all these events. And he says, well, where can I go online and take a peek at? And I looked at John and we both went, you know? Because you, you just brought up a serious deficiency among the board and among the committees, okay? We don't really write news releases. We certainly don't database our events. We don't do Facebook, we don't do Instagram, we don't, well, it's very minimal though. It's, it's very minimal.
I don't object to anything you're saying, that's true.
Okay. It's very minimal.
It's not our core business though.
No, because we're sixty, fifty-five, sixty-one, so we don't do a lot of those other things. Sunny has a hundred nineteen stories that database how great Marquette Township is. Thank God for Sunny.fm. And at our last DDA meeting, Jason says, oh my gosh, you got a hundred nineteen stories. It's all about us, we get no credit for that. I says, yeah, it's not even on your website. You have no events on your website hardly. You have no news, really. Yeah, you have boring minutes, that's great, that's very important. But it's not what really people relate to. Have you written a news release? You?
Me?
Yeah.
Um, yes, I have.
I've never seen it.
Well, it's not about Marquette Township.
Oh, okay. Any of you guys go home, would you write a news release about tonight and say something about this weekend or anything, and who, what, where, when, and heavy emphasis on the why, so we connect with our brand?
But I don't think we can do that, that's not our role.
I'm just wondering.
But we can go on Facebook.
But you do have a Facebook, you do have an Instagram.
We can go on our, our own Facebook page and write something.
But you've just brought up a serious deficiency.
And we, we know that's been identified when we did strategic planning.
You have a public relations arm. Here they are, with him and him, us.
Well, well, I think we're the events committee is what we're talking about, not public relations today.
Well, but that's really critical. Fortunately, you have a hundred nineteen news stories online that if you Google Marquette Township, you're gonna find Sunny ahead of the township, but at least the township comes up. The other thing is, with like hundreds of ads on every event, I get way more than we deserve. We get way more than we deserve, because we have a partner. So that's one thing to always think about when you add new people in media or whatever. It's fine, but they have to step up. We are a nonprofit, so to speak, or we're a government entity. We deserve more. We deserve more, we need things doubled and tripled. So anyway, all of this ten years, twelve years of a snowball rolling down a hill and all this positive stuff, a hundred nineteen things on there, hundreds of ads, great looking posters you just saw, you know? It all adds up. And I would think if you walked around and talked to people about Marquette Township, most of it's gonna be pretty positive. You start bringing up other ones, I don't know. Did I answer your question?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
It's okay, I could be, you know, I have lots of questions about this. Not just this, but you know, I agree, we do need to market, market township.
Well, we have, we've been doing that.
Right, but as a board, it's our responsibility to do certain things.
I agree. It took the, I was on the committee maybe twelve years now, it took me about seven years to even get on the website, that we have an events committee. In fact, it might have been nine years.
That Marquette Township held an events committee?
Yeah, it took nine years, never was acknowledged.
Oh.
There's not a button on the website. Finally was about three years ago. Yeah, because I've been ahead of that and ahead of the DDA from the beginning. And I feel like the DDA is another topic that we could do a lot more with. And I'm still excited.
Still excited. It's good to be excited, Todd, go be it, yeah, the library, yeah, that's exciting to play there.
Bill, do you want to share anything too?
No, I'm here to just answer your question to the panel.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you for the time.
Yeah, that was great.
Okay, thanks.
That in the history, thanks. Have fun.
Thank you.
All right. You kind of see where I'm thinking we need to start. How we should, or should we, or do we, or sponsor township events? That was one of the points that was brought up at one of the other meetings, saying that, you know, other communities don't do that necessarily. That doesn't mean we don't, or, you know, or can't. But these are township funds that we're expending and we want to make sure that we're doing that properly.
Well, it's one way of giving back to the residents also.
Yep. But you gotta remember that when we do things for the township, it has to be for everybody. If everybody doesn't participate, that's their choice. You know, we can't force people to come, but we have to look at the big scope and the big, how can we do this for everybody that would want to participate? So we do have to be careful how we spend those dollars.
Well, it's offered to every resident of the township.
Right, right.
And we see more residents there than we see any other time.
Where?
At our events.
Well, we'd have to take a poll, I suppose, and see who's from Ishbaming or Scamayor.
Well, we'll start ham signing in then.
Yeah. So, so your first question on here though is, can, maybe it should be, can we financially sponsor events?
We can.
And that's what the lawyers said?
The question is, should we? Do we want to as a board? Do we want to as a township?
Do our residents want us to?
No, do we want to? Is this, is this the direction we want to go to spend these funds?
As a board?
Right. Ernie?
Looking at whether we should or should not on events, when you talk about sponsorship and residents being involved, I think, what jumped in my mind right away was Lions Field. How many true residents really use Lions Field? There's a, there's a core that uses it. I think you can look at the events, there's a core that uses it. Now, goes outside that too. It gets to the point where you look at what's best for the township, but you know there's always a, a number of them that'll never use anything, no matter what we do, and that. So you try to hit different groups and that, overall, and that. So that's what jumped out to me as we're talking about the events. And then I looked at Lions Field. We have a number of people who use it, dedicate them using it. And we have a lot of people that come to the events. It's two different groups of people and that, so. And there's gonna be people in the township, I don't care what we do, they're not gonna get involved with anything and that. It's one of those things is, we do the best we can and try to make it available for people in that, in the township. But if they take advantage of it, fine, if they don't, I don't know what we can do. We can't pull them in. We can't like, like a fishing rod, go out there and reel them in, and that, we can't do that. So we just make it available and go from there. That's the way I look at it.
So, Lynn, I'm one of your, so, so I'm a private citizen, I want to have an event. So how, how do I go about getting an event?
You'd have to call the manager and figure out, you know, where you're gonna have it, what, what zoning is allowed and go through that whole gambit of what happens.
Is that what people do? Do we have a form that we fill out? Because that's one of the questions on here.
Well, that's, that comes after the rest of these though.
A permit?
Correct.
To have an Easter egg hunt? And the permit, there's a fee for the permit?
For something like that, there likely would not be. But for certain events, there are.
Okay, okay.
If you're talking about food and that, there are licenses and you have to apply for them and pay for the insurance and everything like that.
If I provide, yeah, that's the county health department.
That's for you to-
The county health department.
No, if you want to put on that event, you have to do that, the township gets a copy of it, because you can't have it unless you got a copy of it.
It's issued by the health department.
It's the health department that gives the license, not the township.
No.
We, we would issue a temporary use permit.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So, um, so, so yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know. I, I, I just kind of am very confused about all of this, about the amount of money put into things. And, you know, I'm sure bands are expensive, but I do know music on Third Street is free. And I do know the bands aren't paid. And music in the mall, how, why would people go into the mall? Because on Third Street, there's all the restaurants, so what's the incentive to get them into the mall? There's not even any stores anymore. I mean, you know, that's a really sad.
Yeah, we're tying this into the event. So like yesterday, and over the weekend, what we did is we had a, you know, the big rum and sale, and we also had live music. So you tie two events to it.
Yeah, so tell me why we want to pay. So this is the part I don't get. Why do, why does the township want to pay for the live music?
Oh, I guess I can answer that.
Yeah, answer that for me, that'll, that'll help.
Where the whole situation came involving the mall is when it was going bankrupt.
Okay.
Among the staff, we decided, with some discussion with the board, we decided, what can we do to help the mall not go vacant and not go bankrupt in the middle of our community, being a large empty space, apparently?
So kind of-
So we made, we made a decision, staff, among the staff, planner, myself, legalization, assessing, we made the decision that we would look to the events committee to try and do something, to try and draw traffic into the mall for the idea of getting traffic moving in the mall that would make it a little more easy for somebody to move a business in there or a little more attractive. That was where that came from. That was an internal decision. We did that by shifting money within, within the budgeted funds. We took a little bit from each of the events to be able to sponsor that very specific activity to see if it would draw anybody in. That's how that started and it's gone from there. And that was two thousand nineteen? We did the first one in two thousand nineteen, and then it's gone from there now. The, it's a very valid discussion, who should be funding it? Should the township be funding that or not? We did it once on an experimental basis to see if something would, would work. We then got the business association, or the builders association to come in and do the builder's show in the mall from that same standpoint. We didn't fund any of that. That was the builders association that did. But the whole idea was to get some activity in that structure, excuse me, to have it not necessarily go dark. That was, we thought that was a reasonable expense through the DDA and through the township to try and do that. Now, there is a difference between the township DDA and the city's DDA. They are totally different animals, totally different functions. The DDA in the town, in the city is designated and designed specifically to bring economics into the city. The township's DDA is to preserve property value, is not to bring business in. Property value, and it's severely limited in how it can spend, it's minimal two percent.
So is that governed by the state?
That's governed by your, your authority document. The DDA is a separate governmental authority under the township.
So who wrote that, Randy? Who wrote?
We're in the process of doing that now.
Well, it's-
Who wrote what the DDA tells?
That was back when, when this whole area was developed. This is the purpose for the DDA was to develop this area right here with the township.
So the township wrote that?
No, the state.
The state wrote that?
Yeah, it's, it's a separately recognized authority with its own board and its own ability to, to spend basically and to do projects.
So it's not the state?
The point of the DDA here was to bring tax revenue here, and that has not been the issue. Almost everything in center is non-tax. I mean, it's just the way it is. The biggest chunk of property just got developed up there for Fish and Wildlife, a non-tax entity. That should have never happened, never gone there. Shouldn't have been approved, but it was. But again, you know, you've got church property, you've got Fish and Wildlife, you've got Mark Trans, you've got, you know, they're all non, non-tax entities. The reason we moved here when we built this building was to try and draw businesses in here. It's a business park, so that's not the way the property was sold. The property was sold by the owners who, we should have acquired all the property as part of the DDA, but didn't.
Yeah, interesting concept.
So I mean, but that's the difference between music on Third, music on Third, yeah, I mean, they generate a lot of their own revenue by being out there. You know, they're advertising their own skills and their own activities. And they're all pretty well-established, excuse me, established bands for the most part, established musical groups that get most of their business by venues in the city. So it's, you know, it's for them, it's a public relations thing.
Just like the library stuff.
Yeah, kind of. Very, very much so. You know, the thing I think you have to think about in terms of, of the events is, do you even want to have events? That's your primary question, do you even want to do it? I mean, the Lions Field, as Ernie mentioned, is, it was developed and the money, lots of money was put into that to be an attractive venue for the residents of Marquette Township. The one square mile where ninety percent of the residents live, Trowbridge Park. That was, that was why money was put there, it's why we acquired climbing structure, it's why we built the ice rink, it's why we redid the field. You know, all of those things were to benefit the residents. And bringing more people into the township benefits the residents. I mean, they spend money on the township when they're here. So I think those are all kinds of things that you need to think about from a standpoint of, are the events valuable or not? Yes, they cost twelve thousand five hundred dollars, but what do you get back for the twelve thousand five hundred? Super One gives you between a thousand and fifteen hundred back right off the bat. They donate, all of the, their staff donates their time when they're there at the community events. They took over the Community Day, they took over the Christmas tree election in terms of providing all the presents. And the, and the car show. Right, originally, the car show was after these.
Put it this way, I've never heard anyone complain about our events.
Well, and I guess that's, that's your question. In your community, you're four thousand people roughly, you know, depending what the census says next time, but around four thousand people. I mean, is it, is it worth twelve thousand five hundred dollars to put on events to draw those people in to meet with you, meet with your staff, meet with the neighbors? Which was the whole point of community events originating was the sense of community, building a sense of community, have people involved. If you don't think it's worth it, then don't do it. So it's as simple as that. The committee is simply an ad hoc committee, it's not a formal committee. It's, you know, I, I was part of it as township manager, John was part of it as township manager. I don't even live in the township, for Christ's sakes, you know, and I'm at all the events, and, you know, helping plan them and that kind of stuff. But I think that's your base question, and the very first question on there is, do we even want to do events? Do we want, does there a benefit to it for the township? Is it worth $12,500 to do it?
But what you didn't say, Randy, is that all the, the projects in Market Township, there are a lot of residents. There was a Lionsfield that was very active building it. Uh, there's a lot of people building that warming shed, you know, putting that together.
Yeah, a lot of volunteer work.
Yeah, we've had a lot of people from the residents come in and work on that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. Uh, you know, I, I've never heard anybody say, when did you stop doing those? I mean, beyond performance, yeah, I haven't. Even now, when I go to the gym in the morning, I've got people saying, when's the car show? What's the date, is it set up yet? Uh, you know, I mean, it's, those are some things that people in the community and outside the community look forward to. We, you know, Todd's right, we generate a reputation for the three major events. Should we be doing the ones in the mall? That's certainly questionable. The mall is the benefit, maybe they should be funding it. The, the business association routinely gives us $500. Uh, mentioned Super One generally gives us back somewhere between $1,000 and $1,500 every year. That comes back into Lois, you know, I mean, she, she takes care of the money. She takes care of what, I authorize everything that's spent, or I did, now John does. Uh, everything that's spent, whatever comes in, revenues or donations, we usually get, the car show, we usually get a couple hundred bucks in donations. You know, people just say, yeah, let's just go out here, you know, help pay for some of the food, whatever. And the other thing we've entered into is community food bank. You know, there's no registration fee for the car show, you bring two or three cans. Can goods or very goods or whatever for Salvation Army, who's usually there, or St. Vinnie's, or whatever happens to be that year. So I guess that's it. Right now, it's, it's a very loose ad hoc committee, it's not formalized at all. There are no policies, there are no procedures. Everything was done under your procurement policy by me as the township manager. In compliance with that policy.
So can we answer the first question? Do we, do we have thoughts?
No.
Go ahead, Tom.
On the first question that you had there, should the board financially sponsor township events? I think you want a quick answer to that. It should read, should the board financially sponsor approved township events?
Yeah, that's fine. The, the whole idea is, do we want to pay to have these events? And if we do, that's fine.
All, all I'm trying to do is get you to qualify that to approved township events.
Well, if we put the money toward them, they're approved. I mean, the three events that we have now are approved by the board.
You can gang around it all you want, the bottom line is, if, if there's been a void at all, and I don't think, I don't think anything that you folks have done should change. I think it's been well-sponsored and well-thought-through. And you're doing the best you can with the ad hoc committee. But what I think, if there's been a void at all, that is probably at the seat of some of the questions that have come up. It's... Has the township, we, I think we would have approved every one of the events without question, had they been brought to this board. I don't think they always have to come to the board for, it just, it can be brought to the board through your representative. But that hasn't been the case.
I have to disagree with you, John, I have to disagree with you on that, because you approve it every year in the budget, you approve it.
That, that's the budget.
Well, it's the budget, but then we also put it on the calendar, on the township's calendar, which the board approves.
Yeah, but we didn't even know anything about these last two events, the March and April ones. Pete mentioned them at the last meeting, it's like, what do you mean, we're having these events?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, those, those are not our primary events, those were to try.
But we still didn't know about them. We're saying it's a township event. Does that come out of the 12-5? Did we pay for that? Did we get a bill for any of it? Did we know it was coming? Nope. And I think that's one of the things that, that got this ball rolling, is that things are happening and we don't know what's happening.
See, and that's what I'd say, up until the 19 budget, which was the last one that I did, those funds were included in that budget for those couple of programs. Now, the last year or two, in, in 20 and 21, I, I sent the email that I sent out, I don't know where it went off the rails. I don't know who was approving what, or it wasn't, it was gone in August, so, didn't know.
Ernie?
I think, listening to everything right now, do we want to continue to have events in the township? I think that's the first question we have to come up with.
Well, if somebody wants to hold an event, that's up to them. Do we want to pay for events?
I'm, I'm getting to that.
Okay, okay.
Do we want to hold some events in the township? That kind of comes back to the board. If it comes back to the board, are we going to invest dollars to those activities? What are those activities that we're going to invest the dollars to? We need a budget for one or all of them broken down in that.
It's already been approved.
Pardon?
It's already been approved.
What's been approved?
The 12-5, it's approved in our budget.
And what's it approved for?
Right, what's it for?
Well, that's true.
Yeah, but let it be finished.
Let it be finished. Let me finish next. Once you do that, you got the dollars set aside, then the defining how those dollars are going to be spent, and who's going to oversee those dollars, and that. Then, if you have to sign some individuals or group to do something, the only people that can issue a contract and sign it is the township board. That's what our attorney said, so that's what we have to go by. So if there is a contract involved in any form, to any, any entity, it has to come to the board to get approved.
Like the bands, is that what you're thinking?
I'm saying anything, doesn't make any difference in that. The board has the end responsibility. That's like anything we do in the township. The board is the final say on it, so.
To a point. You delegate to your township manager up to $10,000 without board approval. Under your procurement policy.
No.
That's okay, if that's it, then everything has to go through the township manager.
That's what we've always done since.
That's always been done, for the eighteen years that I was here.
Is there a problem with that?
With what?
Where it's been done in the past eighteen years?
We wouldn't be questioning it.
Up to $10,000 to have John sign for $5,000 here, or $5,000 there. This is the budget he's got to work with, is 12-5, you don't go over it.
You're talking about two different things. The procurement policy allows the manager to spend up to $10,000 without board approval directly, okay? We also have a $12,500, or whatever the number is now for sure, as a budgeted amount. That doesn't mean we have to spend the whole amount either. So they're kind of two different things. Yeah, if he has authority to spend the 12-5, he knows that's a budgeted amount. He, we have a list of what the item, what the events are, what they're going to cost, when they are, and everything. That's separate from his authority to spend. I mean, he has authority to spend up to $10,000 without having to come back to the board.
But we as a board, we don't want to start micromanaging what frigging band they're going to be getting. We don't have time for that.
We're not in the band business, that's part of the problem.
We've got this money, the manager should be responsible to, to hire a band if he sees fit, to put on a, a events committee, or a, um, Community Days. They don't have to come back to the board and say, okay, Suzie and Tom, they want to play. How do we know anything about that?
We didn't give.
The events committee says, these are good bands, they talked to John, they talked to Pete, they know, they've done it for eighteen years. I don't want to be responsible for Suzie and Tom to come back and have a band that is lousy.
That, that's not the issue at all. John, let John speak, he's been quiet down there, and I'm sure he has thoughts.
The budget has not changed since Randy left. Let's be clear on that, first of all. It's been 12-5 since I've arrived here, and probably before that. The problem is, in my opinion, and Randy and I may disagree on this, but that's okay. 12-5 is more than 10, is it not? So if we're going to spend 12-5, why not commit to what that 12-5 is going to be spent on, all in one shot? And then, I can do my job. And if I convey to the committee what my expectations are on how the money is spent, when we go over budget, I just start denying invoices. And you know what happens then? Somebody doesn't get paid. So last year, I paid an invoice that put us over budget. I don't feel good about that. So that's where I think we need to get more clear on what the expectations are. And since the time I've taken this chair at this board, I've heard more than one of you say, you have concerns about how we're spending some of this money. So if there's concerns about how we're spending the money, I'm going to put the brakes on even more. Because that 12-5 is, again, over 10. So we need to back up and figure out, what are the real intentions with this 12-5? If you want to fund the three core events, which is what you've already committed to at a prior meeting this year, great, let the events committee give you a budget for those three events, and let's move on, if you, if you agree with it. If you don't agree with it, then we figure out why, so the events committee can go back to.
It's that simple, it's that simple.
But I don't want someone to come up and say, okay, the band, the board's going to have to look at these bands. The board has nothing to do with that.
No, we don't want to do that.
They stay out of that band thing.
Quit using that as an excuse for what you've been doing.
No.
Yes.
John.
No.
John, John.
Listen, John, the way it works, John, they, they went over there, they interviewed for bands, and then they come up and they do it, all right?
Don't hold them up. I don't have a problem with them. I have a problem with you not.
Time out, time out.
Bringing to the board what the intent was.
I don't want to hear nothing more about bands, because that's not a part of this discussion.
It's just some minutia of this whole discussion. If we want to agree to these three events, and we're going to spend the 12-5, that's fine. But some of the board members have said, why are we, as a township, paying for township events? Why don't the other entities, whoever they are, whether it's a radio station or the mall, do it themselves?
We've offered many ti, I've offered many times, I, we could make a ton of money, the radio station ourselves, if we just put on this event. We could put the Christmas show on, we could do the Father's Day show. But it's the township that we're giving the credit to. And that, that, that's the whole idea. It could be a whole media brew communications event, and we leave you completely out of it.
Yeah.
And we could bring in anybody we wanted to. Because we have the parking lot, we have the, we could work right, directly with Joe at the mall. He would give us all that profit, everything that we needed to do, that we've been doing in the past. If this was just a way, and I was brought into this through Todd, with Randy, how can the radio station do it? I mean, right now, on this event that you're talking about last, or that we had over the weekend, I already gave over $5,000 worth of radio advertising, one month of advertising, five spots on each station. Might not mean anything to you, but we have six stations, we pounded it, we made all the flyers for it, we did everything. We hooked everything up for it, and we're probably not going to get paid for it. I took a pod, Todd, DeTrusso, and he said, we may get this approved, we may bill $600, we may not get $600. We took, we took $25 for each one of the events. They wrote me a check this morning for $850 that I have to put toward a $5,000 investment we make to help out the mall, and put the township on everything, and all the breaks we did. So I mean, really, I'm doing this to help the township. I came on the other board to help the township. I want to see how our station can help it, we are right in the township. We'd love to help you, but I mean, we're giving away a tremendous amount. So when I sit here and listen to that, you know, you say, well, it's not this, it's not this, it's not this. These events could happen anyways, and some other entity will make a lot of money on it. And that, and we're not doing it that way, because we're just donating our time. Every one of our people donate their time to us, and it's usually on a weekend, something like this. So, I mean, we can do whatever we want, you know, and I mean, if you don't feel that we need a, a, you know, to have events, I'll tell you right now, two of them will take right over, the, the car show and the, the Christmas one. The, the Community Days picnic, you know, we'd have no desire for that. But I guarantee you, off of those two events, the radio station will way make more than the 12, the $12,500 as a budget on this. We're just trying to do a good deed for the community.
So why don't we just partner with you and make way more than $12,500?
How is that possible then?
We can't.
How is that possible? Are you going to, because I mean, you'd have to directly pay for it.
Yeah.
And if I, if you're coming as a partner with me, then I can't give you the three to one. I can't give you that deal.
What's the three to one?
Three to one, if you say, if you give me $1,000, say, if you give me $1,000, you still come to me and you say, hey Bill, you know, I have an event, and I only, I only have $1,000. Now, I have in the discretion of my, uh, if I want to give you $1,000 for the advertising, or I give you $3,000, maybe I give you $4,000. Because I believe in the event.
So what, the advertisement is on the radio station, is that correct?
Yes.
So it's, it's, it's ads on what radio station? Sunday 101, is that it?
Well, we have six of them.
So you advertise on six different radio stations?
Six different radio stations, inviting everybody to come to the mall, it's a great day, come onto the township. On Saturday and Sunday, do this, do this, it's going to be the UP's largest indoor rum and sale.
It's the whole.
And we're inviting people to go to the township, as we do on the car show. We invite people to come to the township. And Todd's correct on that, uh, we give a prize away for all the cars, we have drapils all the time. I myself take time out of my busy day to go to every one of the vendors, every car dealership, everything I can, to give them, to donate prizes for me.
And what does the township do for the car show?
Uh, they pay for the advertising.
We pay for the advertising?
That's part of the $12,500.
Oh.
And then we set up, we set up the whole parking lot, we are manning it.
And how?
I get, I get Super One to come over. Uh, Super One has been involved since I brought them in.
So you, you get the Super One people to come?
I get the Super One people, because I have a relationship with their advertising.
Because I don't understand, yeah. Am I the only one that doesn't know how this works? Because I can do this later.
Sort of, but there's, there's some good details that we didn't know.
It's a good idea to understand, because what we do is, all I do is deal with business people all day long. And I say, hey, you know what, we're having a great event over here at, uh, over in the mall parking lot. This would be a fantastic way for you to go out here, get Super One's face out here, do you have people that would donate their time? Sure. Then they talk to one of their vendors, maybe it's Bulwars, maybe it's Farmer Pete, and they get them to donate X amount of hot dogs. And we do this, and we do that, and we do this. Then we sell them, uh, the car show people, for entering a car, gets a ticket. But there's a lot of people that just come there that want to look at cool cars. And you smell a brat on the grill, you're going to buy a brat on the grill.
It's like popcorn.
Okay, so if it's five bucks for a brat and a, a pop, all that money they raise, they just give back to us. It tells you, they just give back to us. And I give checks, so I, I bring checks over here all the time.
And then that money goes back into the, I'll call it the activity fund, the event fund?
Well, I don't know where it goes.
Back into the fund to support the event.
So we budget 12-5, and we get money back in, so we really are.
One or two thousand.
Uh, one or two thousand, okay.
Like the money that comes back from the community events day goes back into Lionsfield. Maintenance, improvement, I mean, it's, I mean, it just doesn't evaporate.
Right, so it goes into a different fund?
Yeah.
No, he said the lot, the Community Day, money that we get for that, goes into the Community Day Lionsfield fund.
I guess what's being, what's being missed is, and I don't disagree with John, or what John said, but you're not talking about a single expenditure of $12,500. You're talking about three separate events at three separate times of the year that are individual events that in aggregate total $12,500. So there's, there's not, there's not a policy issue. And, and if you go back and you look at your, all your old budgets, because at every budget session, we talked about community events, and what was going to happen, and what constitutes the money. If you go into the files, each of those, and if you go into my, my transmittal to you, you will see, they're all identified specifically in there what they're going to be. Each of them has a separate budget, but none of them are more than $10,000. The three together in aggregate are $10,000, so they did not have to come back to the board. That's, that's where the disconnect is.
So we should only be at $10,000 then?
Well, it was $12,500 total. It's three smaller, individual programs that total $12,500 in that budget line item.
So that was the workaround.
Right, if they're, if they're each $5,000, and we had $15,000.
Yeah, yeah. But our, our current manager isn't comfortable with this, okay?
Well, that's, that's fine, that's what you say. You know, whenever you have, whenever you have a change in leadership, whether it's the township supervisor or the township manager, you have a different approach to the way you look at things. My approach was put into place over eighteen years. John took that over partway through year number eighteen. Okay, and, you know, so when I gave you in, in July, your very preliminary early budget before I retired in August, I don't know where that budget went, because I wasn't here to finish it, but in that budget, you had the three separate projects. I done, I think the total was $45,000 for that line item of the budget, is that roughly?
The community.
Some of that, some of that.
But that's been anywhere.
It included some of the roundabout money that we paid, included some of the other stuff, but in there was $12,500 for the three community events.
But it's not just the cost of the $12,000 for community events you're talking about. No, it's the cost of staff to, all the staffing for these events has a cost. We never talked about that.
Ninety percent, ninety percent of that cost was voluntary, it didn't cost you a dime.
Not, not our, no, I don't think our staff. Not, not our, no, I don't think our staff were, I don't think they.
Our staff, other than the manager, that doesn't.
Your building ground staff helped with the setup and the monitoring.
And they don't get paid?
Yes, they were paid.
Yeah, during their regular day.
They were paid on the regular shift, they were working.
Yeah.
And they covered that on their regular scheduled shift, it was not extra cost.
So on Saturday, they?
I don't know what happened in the last ones, but the ones that I did, they were there on their regular scheduled shift. It wasn't necessarily overtime unless we wanted it to be overtime, which was pre-approved.
And that's a cost, you know, the, the city has that same cost when they have events like the parade and the things.
But he didn't get paid for doing any of it, I can get paid for doing any of it.
But you were salaried.
He's up, I mean, you know, yeah.
Who's that salary?
I'm salaried.
Pete, okay, okay, alright, sure, John?
Sure he is.
John.
Did everyone hear what Bill just said?
No, cuz I was talking.
About the two events that they could take and run with? Why are we staying in their way?
Yeah, why wouldn't we support a business that wants to make money?
Let them take it and run. They'll do it way better than we are, we're holding it back.
But again.
Let's take Community Day and focus on that.
Your events that you put into place were for you to have communication with your residents. If you wanted to have them do that, then fine, then decide you don't wanna have that communication with your residents.
But Randy, I'm not sure we have communication with residents. Pete threw an ice bat with his wife Marilyn and handed on hot chocolate. And no one said, oh, hi, Pete, you're trustee. They didn't, they didn't know who we were.
Next time I'll put name tag on it.
Yeah. Okay, so, you know, yeah, community events was all started to have communication with residents. I'm not sure we're still doing that.
They just canceled.
And maybe, no, I don't think, no Randy, I don't think, I don't think we wanna cancel anything. For me, I need a better understanding. And I also know that communication is different today than it was ten years ago. And we talked about that, about our Facebook page, the web, all those things. And we also just joined Lake Superior Community Partnership and they're gonna do press releases for us free. That's part of what their package is. So, you know, we need to expand and bring in and do what works, but yeah, if you can do it better. Pete and I'll probably still serve hot chocolate for you.
No, going forward, that's fine. All that I'm trying to do is answer the questions that I heard about how did we get here and why are we doing this?
Right, and cuz you always have to know that.
Yeah, you know, and it was budgeted and it was not a violation and Roger approved the way we were doing it. Uh, you know, it was all covered by liability insurance. So all of that stuff that I heard concerns about on the board were all taken care of, they were all handled. What happened in the second half of, or the last third of twenty twenty and all of twenty-one, I can't answer, I don't know. Uh, I, you know, John and I are on the committee. But we didn't approve budgets or anything at the committee level, I'm just.
Ernie?
Just listening to everything, we're looking, talking, we keep talking about the three events right now. And Linda brought up a point too. If we as a township did not move forward on the car show and the Christmas activity, whatever you wanna call them and that. And you indicated that you could assume that responsibility.
If we, if we choose that we want to.
Yeah.
If we choo- we may not want to do that.
Okay.
We may not want to, I mean, that, we are, this is, this is not a money-making thing for us at all, what we do. It's, it's, it's truly not for the amount of effort that we put into it, it's not, it's, it's more of a thing for the township because we believe in the township.
Okay. Let's flip the page then. You indicated earlier that if you assumed those responsibilities for it.
Sure.
You could generate revenue.
Absolutely.
Greater amount than we could ever think about in that too, so.
That's our, that's what we do, that's what we do, we sell advertising. We just, we sell, we sell events.
Do you feel that?
You couldn't generate revenue.
I know that.
You could charge at the car show, you could charge an entry fee for the car show, I mean, you, you know, we opted not to do that because of this community benefit that we felt we were doing, so.
The question I have is, if your business assumed that responsibility, how would you advertise it to be in the township to get people to still look at it as this activity is going on here?
To advertise at a Westwood Mall?
Yeah, so.
Take place at a Westwood Mall or whatever?
Yeah, I mean, i- i- if we assumed it ourselves, it would be a re- the Media Brew Communications along with the Westwood Mall is inviting Santa to come to the Westwood Mall, the township would never be mentioned in it. It would just be the Westwood Mall. And Super One will be there, it'll be the parking lot joining it. Uh, because the, the, the credit just would not be given. And, and there was a lot of goodwill given out of credit, or, you know, uh, through that message. And, and plus, by opening up the, the interviews, I mean, I can't, well, John's been on the radio station many times in the morning, on the morning show. Um, you know, we, Randy's been in there a million times. You know, and, and we, we talk about every event coming, you know, that, that's happening there. We even have, uh, Jason in there talking about potential new things that are happening in the field. That's all stuff that we just donate. Air is not free i- in our business, so, so what we do, we, you know, we're paying staff to do this and, and put this on and, you know, the cost of everything and, you know, we pretty much just handed it over and said, okay, we can do this, we will help you out on these events. And as these events have gotten more and more and gotten bigger and bigger, we have, they have relied a lot on the radio station to, to get the food at the events through Super One. I use the connection through Super One to get them there. Uh, last year for Christmas, I had Jet's Pizza, which doesn't even locate in the township, to buy all the candy to give out. You know, we had different people donating stuff and I went out and I, I secured for it. But it all was a township, it was all got hung under the township umbrella.
I'm trying to figure out how, if we divorced ourselves from those two entities, what benefits will we as a township lose if we divorce ourselves?
We'll lose all the credit.
We lose the credit.
They're giving us the credit.
Now, the cred- that's, that's fine, the problem is, how many people relate to that back to the township? That's the next question. I don't know that, that too, so, I have no idea, so. It's still gonna be in the township, it's still gonna be in Westwood Mall.
Yeah.
Township is still, name is still gonna come up because it's in the Westwood Mall, it's gonna be in the township.
You're still gonna spend money, you know, you know, with the restaurants or whatever, that's still gonna happen, but yeah, you, you, you do not have the recognition of being the sponsor.
Right.
So why, so what do I answer a question if someone says, why isn't the township sponsoring a car show anymore?
That's what I'm trying to get at, is it beneficial for us to divorce ourselves from that?
I would just say, no, I don't think we have to do that.
Okay.
I agree, I don't think we'd have to do that either.
I mean, we, we, we love working with you guys, I mean, and, and trust me, I mean, I, I see your questions that you're having that you don't understand exactly what you, what your line of work on all the stuff that you guys do up there. I don't understand half the stuff you guys are talking about.
We don't either.
But this is, this is something that I've been, i- i- it's just a, it's very unique that I'm here because Todd and Randy had a strong relationship. I was Todd's right-hand guy through the radio station and so, just like everything, it flows downhill. I, it was my responsibility to, to take on this stuff and then I started coming to the events meetings. And then I said, well, I can do this, I can do this, and everybody said, how can we get this bigger and bigger? And I went out to do it, but tha- that's why I'm here. I, and you know what, it, it's a great event, I tell you, I was never more hap- I, I am not a nice person, just let you know that. And, and I don't like Christmas, I don't like anything. And last year, I played Santa the last few years in a row. The first year is when everything was shut down, they didn't wanna do anything. And we were deciding, is Santa gonna be up on top of the mall? Is he gonna hang out there? Do we have to have twelve feet between us? And I was just so over it by then. And we had that event, and that's, you see the picture, you can barely see my face cuz I had to wear a stupid mask. And we had, I just kept saying to the radio station, we have to do this, we have to do this. Because people are dying to get up, they're dying to get up. And we had that Christmas program and we had a line of people lined up. And we gave them a candy cane and we, Pete, all of Bill, here's Aunt Watch, do this, do this. All of a sudden Pete's taking everybody's phone and taking their pictures with me standing by the kid. And there's the look in their face, and last year we could do it inside the mall. And we had a line outside the mall, all the way down to the end where Jandren's, where Todd's places, and back forward to get people to have their photos taken on my lap. And I had to ask everybody politely, what do you want for Christmas? Have you been a good boy or girl? Now, that's not me, but I did it and I loved it. And that was a great event for the township to be a part of. I mean, there was nothing else that happened that was that good. And it just brought the spirit back to how it should be. And if we can help do that, that's great. How do you put a price on that? How do you put a price on not being labeled with, or tagged with it as the major sponsor? I don't know. I know it's a great event. I know it, it warms someone's like my heart and makes me work even harder to, to get it to happen this year. But I, I think it's a fantastic event. I think the car show's a fantastic event and the one out at, uh, at Trowbridge. You see people out there that, that may be the only time I ever see them out there. And I have friends that live out in Trowbridge, a ton of them, and they come over for that event. And that is a one-day event, all-day event. And I think if, for the amount of money to sponsor that, I think it's priceless. I think, I think you're getting away with a deal. And that's, that's just me, I think you're just getting away with the deal. And, but we're happy to do whatever we want to or whatever we can to help you out. If you like, if you don't wanna do this, then I will bring it back to my boss, we'll have to decide. Do we wanna take this on an event, or maybe they just go away completely? Maybe there's no longer a car show, maybe there's no longer a Christmas event and everybody goes downtown. Who knows? You know, we have to see if it's possible.
John, you had your line on quite a while.
Do you want?
I think we're add, back around to that initial question, do, do you want to continue to sponsor the events? If you wanna sponsor the events, then you need to formalize the committee. And the committee then needs to be under supervision of probably the manager, who would manage the budget and manage the, the dollars for it and be the overseer basically with you approving it, because your committees cannot approve money.
Right. What have you got, John? Did you forget? You've been waiting a while.
I think I turned it on when I wanted to suggest that maybe we need to get out of the way of, of a perfectly viable business that could run two of these events, but.
No.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we do it, I'm saying, they could do a much better job if we got out of their way. But maybe what it, maybe what it means is, we have to remember, we're not a marketing agency. We're a governmental agency that collects, collects taxes and provides a service and exchange. Marketing and selling advertisements isn't what we're good at, it's what we need them for. So what is the value of what we're willing to pay them for? Is it what we've been paying in the past?
Yes.
And if, if that's what you all agree on, give me the green light to proceed with the, the budget for the three. Although some of these numbers, we really need to take a closer look at, so the committee has to come back together and figure out how to split it up. I'll come back to you and tell you, this is how we think we're gonna spend the money. And if nobody objects to it, we'll move forward with the events.
Let's do it.
Okay.
But we gotta move along with this because we gotta, we gotta secure these bands, I mean, we're, we're running out of time.
So three events, you're talking about?
Three events.
Only three events.
We got, all year then to discuss if we wanna continue it next year. Which I'm gonna, I'm gonna say we're gonna continue it next year too, because I think it's a big plus for the township and a big feather in our cap as a board, to, to do this for our people. I have never heard anybody object to us spending that money so that they can go out and, and have a good time. I, I'm sorry, I just, I'm a hundred percent behind it, a hundred percent.
Okay, Ernie?
I think we're talking about the three events. Now, if the event committee can take that twelve five and break it to those three events and say, we may wanna throw another one in within that twelve five. They have to come up with that, a new budget to look at all of them, if it's a possibility. But the three main events are the ones we wanna look at. And that, if there's something else that comes up, they're gonna have to come forward and use that activity, the dollars there and break it out so they have some money for that next activity, whatever it is for that. But right now, we're talking about three activities for twelve five.
Right.
Now, the events committee wants to break it a little more finer, to bring in a fourth or a fifth one. They're still under the twelve five, so we go, we'll look at it that way in that.
Well, that's the bottom line.
We have been doing that, what we've done in the past is taking the three events and then as, like these, with the music in the mall. What we did was we dropped Peter to pay Paul, we dropped the price on one of the things to get the money toward the other events. And so, so just like, like if, uh, he had the two bands last week, okay? So Todd paid five hundred dollars, he, so if, if you guys just say you don't wanna do this, then Todd paid for your bands, that's how the money got paid. And Todd is still Great Lakes Radio, Great Lakes Radio still exists. He sold the company two and a half years ago now, we're called Media Brew, but we have all the stations, they're all the same signals. Todd still actually technically works for us because he stays on as a consultant with us. So, that being said, we, we could definitely stay within the twelve five and do all the events. But we could, you could eliminate this, uh, like what we just did with the, uh, um, the, the rummage sale and not have bands in there anymore. And then we just go back to the original prices that we worked through the three events for the Father's Day, the, the tree lighting and then the, uh.
Community Day.
Community Days, cuz that's where we originally came up with that. So I mean, we, we could definitely break it down however you wanted to do it. I mean, it depends if you wanna have just three events or you wanna have, what does it work out to, seven or eight events?
I think we wanna have three, that's what we're saying, three.
That's all we can do.
Yeah, three events, because.
But you're still paying the same price.
Well, you have to come to our, you have to have a.
No, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, you, it, it's not like in personal life or maybe per- personal business where you can weagle money around. You can't weagle money around in government.
Arguably, I can, based on what's been presented tonight, but I can tell you, I'm not comfortable.
You're not too, yeah, no.
It depends on what it is, though.
You're gonna have a problem.
So are we saying that we're willing to support financially events, period, one, two, three, ten, right? We want, we, we're okay with that, right? Because all the rest of this comes from that. If we're okay with spending that money, okay. Do we, did, we just said, Dan suggested that we leave the three events for this year and we talk about it during the rest of the year?
Well, this is, this is my opinion, I think we do the three events that we planned on this year.
Okay.
And then, in the fall, if the events are gonna expand, then you, that would be something in our budget process that we'd be looking at. Cuz we started our budget process in September, so.
And what would you, and before you start anything, anything on anything, you have to know what a budget is. So what is our, you said, we need to know what the budgets were, because then we will tell you exactly what you get for that budget.
In September, when we start the budget, we'll tell you what you'd get for twenty-three. This year's budget's been approved.
Right now is twelve five.
For the three events. So if you decide to do a rummage sale or something in the mall, that's, that's up to you. This board didn't approve that, so that shouldn't come out of the twelve five. Twelve five was for our three events, that's what we expected. It wasn't part of the original proposal, or if you wanna do whatever other stuff in the mall, is that, am I right?
What I'm saying in, for the future.
But for twenty-three.
For twenty-three, if we're looking at expansion, then that's when we look at expanding, maybe either expanding the budget or doing something else.
We have to know about it again, I have to.
So what is, so John, where, where do we sit right now? Because I, I, I mean, I mean, because technically, two more events are still gonna fall under this calendar, under this.
We have twelve five in the budget.
Okay, so.
If they agree to fund more than the three events with that twelve five, then.
Well, no, I'm saying right now, if, uh, in this calendar year, okay, which was twelve five, correct?
Twelve five is what's in the budget.
Okay, so what has, what has, cuz I don't handle that, what has been built here?
Nothing.
We haven't had our first event yet.
We haven't had any event yet.
The car show's the first event. We didn't approve anything else.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, that's all we need.
The Community Day.
So then that, even though you do it in September, December would be included?
There was a, there, there was a breakout for twenty.
Twenty-one.
For twenty-one or twenty-two?
Twenty-one, yeah, it was a huge individual. This is the first time we've seen a twenty-two plan, you know.
We just assumed it was the three.
But we, we planned on three events, that's what we planned on in our budget.
So if we decide to ask you or suggest to you that you take over the car show or whatever, that won't happen until next year. It won't happen till between September and December. But for right now, we've got the car show. But for right now, we've got the car show and community days and Christmas. That's in the twelve-five. That's in this budget. And the board has said, I mean, we can't make a motion tonight because it's a work session.
Sure.
But...
Consensus-wise, we could say we're hap, we're happy with three events.
And that's what we want to do, at least going forward. So the rest of this stuff doesn't have to be answered tonight, but it's stuff that we're going to have to work on for the rest of the year.
See, I just think the manager and Randy was right when, you know, you get change in leadership. He just wasn't comfortable handling things the way Randy did. And, you know, we all have different management styles and such and...
And that's, that's, that's completely understandable.
Yeah, and John just wants to be, you know, he's just a little different and...
Trust me, my boss is no like... I, I worked for Todd for twenty years.
So you know.
And the new guy is nothing like Todd.
So you know.
Now, there's things I love about Todd and there's things I hate about Todd. But I, I do know, I do know one thing, that he is more pro township than anybody I've ever met. I mean, he, the guy sings it.
He did to the city when he left. That's all we heard on the airwaves was, "I'm going to Marquette Township." "The best place to live, work, and play." He was just all about us.
So then, if I, if I can ask one more question, then can we then get a meeting set up so we can, over at the mall, whatever, and actually put it all together? Or do you want, who, who puts that together? I guess a simple question on that. Is it, is it Todd? Is it, is it Todd, Randy, me, you, Pete? Is that how we have to justify everything? Because, you know, I, I just make things happen. They say, "Bill, I have this much money to spend. How big of an event do you need it to be?" And if I'm behind it, I make it happen.
We know what the past has been.
Yes.
So that's what we asked.
And I can, I can totally make it. If it, if it's, if you want for the next three events, for it to be knocked out of the park at twelve-five, that's exactly what it'll be. I just need, who gives that to you? Me? Or not me, of course. Is it Todd? Last year, there was a plan put together just like this. Yep, I see it on the back page. It was a full page. Yep. I think that's what the committee needs to do again. Okay? Only we need to, well, it's, it's almost done. It's just not completely polished yet because we need to hone in three events at a budget of twelve-five. This is not three events at twelve-five. It's a little more events and it's actually a little bit over twelve-five if you do the math, but...
Yeah, it's fourteen.
It's eighteen.
You got eight, I got fourteen.
We've got eighteen.
But the very bottom line says, in proportion to the regular twelve-five.
Yeah.
I'm sure...
It needs to be cleaned up. And I think we can do that pretty quick. I think it should be in the board packet for next Tuesday. So there's no more delays. Because I've been hearing from Pete for probably two months that we should have booked the bands back then. I can't make the board move any quicker than we've moved at this point. I mean, I can work on it with Todd tomorrow. I know he's blown out of town to go to Lansing Wednesday for the rest of the week. I've got to be in Lansing on Thursday myself. So, but here, and I guess I just wanted to ask a simple question to you because, yeah, I know everybody says, "Three events, three events, three events." You can, if you have a budget of twelve-five, what we're saying is that maybe not that you can't move money around, but you could be, have stuff going on all year for the twelve-five and still have those three big events or just have the three big events. It's just how I lower my cost on certain events and then to add it on there. Because I have to have something coming in for each event that we, I have to justify us using airtime, okay? So I can justify it because I know you for a fact out of the three events, you get that, the twelve-five value out of those three events. What I do is I lower it, I lower my R-take, but we spread it out over the year. So it, it, you know, it's, it's basically, if you have, say, if you have twelve-five and you want to make twelve monthly or twelve payments of it, or if you want to make three payments of it, that's all I'm doing. We're mixing it around at the radio station to give you more bang for your buck. So on an event like that they had last week, weekend, you're still getting credit for it, but you're still going to get the car show, same way it's been, the, the community days and the, what's the other one?
The Christmas.
And the Christmas.
The one you forget about.
Yeah.
The one you don't like?
Oh, no, I do. But I mean, you know what I mean? So, and that's just a different option. And to me, if I could get to be talked about throughout the whole year or just three times a year, I'd want to be talked about the whole year.
Well, you have to kind of think, you know, if we are sponsoring this, if this is the way we leave it. And like I said at the last board meeting, Pete said, "Well, we've got an event we're going to have in March." And I went, "What? You can't spring that on the board."
Sure.
So that when we're at Super One and somebody comes up and says, "Hey, I loved your rummage sale." It's like, "What rummage sale?" You know, we need to, if you want to spread out what it costs you and we know we're getting the three events and you want to add new ones, I'm not saying you shouldn't, or I don't know the board is, but we need to know about it. You know, we can't just like have it in a brochure and it's going to happen.
And that, and that's fine. But the only thing I want to make sure is that if, if you, if you come to me then and I, and I break it down over twelve months for you, okay? And I say, "You know what? I don't want to do any of those rummage sales. We'll just take these three events at what you cost it or what you priced it out at." Well, I priced that out at to spread it out over twelve months. Do you see what I mean? So you could come back and say, "Well, Bill, you priced these three events at nine thousand dollars." And then I come back and I say, "Well, okay, that's because I spread it over to the other ones. I, I brought Peter to pay Paul on these other ones." So that's all I, I just want direction because then I can make a, a perfect proposal for your perfect breakdown of everything.
Well, I think John understands what we're looking for and he knows, I think, what you want.
That's fine.
Are, are you clear enough that you guys can work this?
I, I think so. The committee also needs to understand that I won't go over budget.
Right now, you could be paid a budget of twelve thousand dollars to cover three events.
Yeah. But you don't have to spend all twelve thousand. As Ernie would say, "Ernie, I've been there. Just because it's there doesn't mean it has to be spent."
I have never done a budget that was spent to zero, ever. So, no, I, I understand that. Twelve-five is there, that's our estimated cost for the three events. And, you know, and if it turns out that we get more contributions at the car show, then that comes right back into the, right back into the township through Loews. If Super One gives us a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars, goes to Loews. It gets put back in.
Yeah, how would that work if you save your budget and if, if, you know, like, we come to you and say twelve-five and then Super One gives you two thousand dollars over the year on that? So that, then you're, you're the plus end, aren't you?
Do we give it to you? Is that what you're saying?
We don't exactly what the net was because, you know, Business Association gets five hundred towards the events, you know? So I had twelve-five budgeted. We took in thirteen, thirteen hundred, whatever, fifteen hundred, two thousand, whatever this Loews can, she's got that.
It's going to be a new Loews now.
Well, whoever, whoever's doing it can tell you what the net was.
Okay, Ernie?
The question is, we keep talking about twelve-five, okay? How do we pay the twelve-five?
It's in the budget.
No, he means, do we pay like a one-time shot? January or...
You pay it out when you sign it to John. You'll pay...
For each individual event?
Yeah.
There will be so much of what we spent in June on the car show. There'll be another month that will be spent in August at the community day, which is far and away the most expensive of the three. And then at the end of the year, November, when you do the, the Christmas tree lighting.
Before Thanksgiving.
The rest of that goes up. It's left. But that's not all it wants to spread throughout the course of the year.
So there's three invoices? We get invoiced per event.
Okay.
And if we did six events for twelve-five, then we would get six invoices instead of three.
Wherever those invoices come from...
They're not going to go over twelve-five.
Yeah, you're going to get, you know, for the car show, you're going to get three or four invoices for the car show. The expenses that go with the car show. So you do the same thing community do, it'll be more because you have to rent the jump, you know, the jump houses. You got to rent the dumpsters and, you know, those.
John, do you understand that then?
All of that.
It could be more than three. It really comes down to it.
If the board agrees, yeah. I'm not making that decision.
I can see no problem with twelve-five, as long as we hit the three main ones bang. If they want to move that money around to get another one in there, fine. As long as we get those three in there, I don't really care.
I don't either. Just understand that there's no surprise expenses allowed in this plan either way.
Right.
Because we aren't going over budget, period. And if somebody wants to increase the expenditures, it's coming back here because I'm not authorizing it.
Right.
So that's what needs to be understood.
You'll be authorized for twelve-five.
So if, if there's two thousand in new revenue that comes in and somebody wants to apply that to an event, the board can agree on spending that. John is not going to.
Yeah, that would have been amended.
Okay.
And another thing for you, you say, "How busy you were." I, I was going to solve that problem for you. I left the hot chocolate. I see you go watch what you're doing down there in the line. The one lady was leaning against a thing and she said, "Oh, boy, what a big line." I said, "Oh, that's, that's all right." Next year, we'll have two Santas, we can speed it up a little bit.
Are you going to be the other Santa? All right. I can't wait. It'll confuse everybody, but that's not...
You got a face on the front on the back.
Yeah, oh, I'm going to be back, okay.
Well, if they don't like what you say, they're going to go to the other one.
Yeah.
Well, I, I had a, I appreciate that lady, the look on her face, it just, I wish I had a camera.
Raceless.
Okay, so if we put this on the next agenda, we will need to address some of these questions, not all of them. But we need to figure out the structure going forward for the manager so he knows how to...
I think it's the next agenda. You, you have this plan as John, you wrap up that, you wrap this plan up in the next few days and then get it on the agenda.
I would suggest that if you want to do a committee, that you structure a committee under the DDA, community events, just like you have the road committee and the recreation committee under planning. I didn't get it away from me, just so you know.
It can still be a board committee too.
But the, but the DDA is a, if you're going to have a committee, it should be under the DDA as a subcommittee.
But I think if, if we get a plan like this for the next meeting, we can approve it and then it'll be much easier for you to move forward.
That's it. Do we even want to consider the event that already took place in the twelve-five budget?
I don't know, we didn't approve it. We didn't even know about it.
The events committee needs to know this. That's why I'm bringing it up.
I didn't know nothing about it until I saw it.
I, I'd like to say no one did because I knew nothing about it. I would have been there if I would have known about it. I haven't listened to the radio station all that often lately, but...
Well, what about the April one then, too? That's already planned.
The what one?
April.
April.
But that's not our...
This is all coming us, this is supposed to be us.
I, I don't, I don't think it was advertised as us. I have a copy of a flyer that was in airstreaming and it didn't say...
Our logo's on here.
On that one? Where, where, not on the one, I have a picture of.
Oh.
Well, I just say...
Someone probably took a snapshot of it and didn't include your things because I, I made them.
Yeah, and maybe they made up their own flyer.
And I made them and then, then I had to, then I had to make more and then I had to make more and then they wanted to make more. And then when I went Saturday to the event, there was another stack of them there and they just switched the dates because all the vendors said they wanted to come back. They had thirty new vent, they had thirty people already signed up for the next one.
My feeling is, let the events committee move forward on this. They have twelve, twelve-five to work with. Now, if they want to put the additional one in there, fine. As long as we get those three main ones...
They can recommend to the board.
They can recommend to the board the others, but...
But will that not, if we have more than three, that's going to then take some of the advertising away from the main three, correct?
No.
No.
No. Because we want the event to be as successful as it can be. So we're, we're still going to do the same thing. It's what I've done is, on the three events, we know exactly how much advertising we need to do, how far out we have to start it, exactly what we need to do. And, and we price those things out and they have an increase in price in, in a couple of years, what we do. When they wanted to get the music in the mall, when they, when Todd brought that to me and when Randy brought it and we were talking about doing all this stuff, what we decided to do is, we knew we had a budget. I said, "So we'll charge less for this one to include this one." Because what I needed to do is anytime I put a schedule together for putting advertising on our stations, I need to have some money coming in. So as long as we showed some money coming in and we got the backing of my boss, which he's all about being community-minded, he just said, "Yeah, whatever way it works out." And so basically, what I did is I, I just played with our old budget. I said, "Well, okay, instead of charging you four thousand for this one, you know, I'll charge you three thousand, but then I got to get five hundred dollars for each one of these other two events so I can show some money coming in." Because we have to justify, because the reason we have to do this, which means nothing, but we're in a political year this year, okay? So since we're in a political year, there's this thing called the political advertising. And so forty-five days before a general election, sixty-five days before the other one, I have to, we have to be very accurate on what we charge people or what we allow people to advertise for. Because I could have somebody, say if I said, "I'm going to give all these spots to you for a dollar. I'm only going to charge you a dollar a spot." Then all of a sudden, any candidate can come into our public files, look through there and say, "Whoa, whoa, 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 you gave the township for this event a thirty-second spot for one dollar. I'd like to buy two thousand dollars, so I'd like to have two thousand ads on your station. And since they paid it in that window, I get it." And I don't like that happening. So that's how we have to justify our, if that makes any sense whatsoever.
It makes a lot, I know how that works.
And we're going into that. And this year is going to be a very highly contested midterm. So I expect that, you know, everything we do. I just turned down a big order from Menards. Because Menards, you know, notoriously likes to put pressure on you and says that, "We're only going to pay two dollars and fifty cents a spot and we want it in prime time, drive time." And, you know, bigger markets will do that. They'll give it to you. And we had to say no. We turned down, even though it was a twenty thousand dollar buy, I had to turn it down because you, you, we potentially would lose way more if we played their game.
You know you're going to make more than that to offset what they want.
Oh, absolutely. And, and this thing, and like I said, the twelve-five, I can put together a perfect budget, you know, or the whole year, or I could do the three events. It, it's your choice. And that's all I'm saying. And in my mind, if, if I could have my, my, you know, the township mentioned twelve times throughout the year or three times for the same price, I would definitely take twelve. It, it's just common sense, to me. But I think, I think in advertising terms.
Okay. Do you have what you need then, John?
No.
You good? No, what do you need?
Because I feel like some of you want to only spend twelve-five on three events and some, I, I see at least one head nod.
Yeah, that's what we set up. We keep changing.
I don't have to change anything. I need to know what my direction is.
I mean, we keep changing here.
I've always said, whatever we can work in a twelve-five, as long as we get the three, three main ones in.
You're still getting the three main ones. It's, it's, it's like paying twelve thousand five hundred dollars for a car, but then they offer you, "Do you want air conditioning and a CD player and, you know, an extra vaccine?" It's, it's all up to you what you want.
I thought we said we wanted three events.
Then that's fine.
Isn't that what we said?
Why don't we just stick with the three, and then we'll take, you know, no, nothing else will ever be mentioned? We won't tie in anything else.
I thought we, I thought we did agree on three events for this year, and then we can, we can look at it for the future.
Well, we had March and April, is what he's talking about, March has already happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're having nothing to do with those.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm clarifying.
Anything at the mall.
Right.
And April, same thing.
Right.
Because our name is on this, right? So logo either comes off, or whatever for April.
Whatever, whatever they want to do.
However, that has to work.
But we'll do our three main events.
You only want us to sponsor the three events, right?
For this year.
Is that the consensus?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that okay, John, then? Is that clear enough?
There is one.
If that's what you want to do, it's what the events committee will come back to you with for a breakdown of twelve-five on those three events.
Okay.
With, like I said, like Dan said, with maybe next year, if we want to do stuff at the mall, we'll look at that.
I think it was quite a, just a surprise to all of us, that, you know, where did this come from?
At least, I... And, 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 just from my viewpoint, I think there was a couple of meetings that we missed because of either Todd being out of town for some reason, I think John's father passing, I think we were supposed to be doing that. We had been working on this budget for a long time, we just never got, things got canceled. And so, here we are at the last minute, still trying to do it, and so the events needed to go on anyways. So we took a crapshoot to say, "Okay, you'd be included in it, if not, so since it's not, just every, next time you see Todd, say, 'Thank you for paying for the bands,' because he, it was a nice gift for him, he can afford it, why not?" You know, but he, so he bought the bands, you know, for the last thing. And on April, we won't even mention it, you know? If he decides to do the bands, then that, that'll, that'll come out of his pocket again. But we won't mention anything with the township on that.
No, fine.
Is that right?
At least we made the, the, the three events, and we'll definitely have a breakdown, and we'll see where we're, where we came up with the twelve-five figure.
That works.
Okay.
And then this will be...
And for the future, I guess, if we can have some kind of an idea of what the rummage sale on average would cost, if we have to go over the twelve-five, or how, how we can make that work.
Next year?
Yeah.
Or do six events just as good for the same price, which is even better?
Right.
If Bill says he can do it, then we'll buy it.
I mean, I've, you know, I, I know we can do it, so it's kind of, it's kind of confusing to me in that, that you wouldn't want to do it that way, but I understand. I mean, whatever, that's fine.
We'll work it in next year.
Good.
Okay.
So John, can you meet? If we, if I pull a quick thing together with Todd, or do you want to be in there? But I know you need this for next Tuesday, that, I know he's, Wednesday he's gone, so I have to do it tomorrow. So I'm gonna have to carve time out of my day tomorrow, sit down, and...
I'll be available at some point tomorrow.
Huh?
I'll be available at some point tomorrow, just to review what you put together, does that sound good?
How about, how about, are you available? No, just checking. But I mean, we can put it together and then just email it to you.
Yeah, if I have any questions or concerns, we'll talk about it, we'll hash it out, and then we'll get it in the packet for next Tuesday.
Okay. You don't need it till Thursday, but he said...
No, he's gonna...
Okay, but, and Todd's gone, Wednesday.
Between noon and one, you're busy? So if we get out earlier or after one? Okay, that's all we need.
Okay.
All right, we're good?
We're good.
I'm exhausted.
Yeah, me too. Need to get up and walk around.
John looks so relaxed.
My ride's here, we gotta go. So what time is it?
It's seven fifty-five.
All right, seven fifty-five.
It's your time, you're ready.
We're just finishing, so... We're good?